A little bit after 5:30, close by at 5:30, we can call it that nearly. But we'll open a public hearing for proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. Ms. Walker, if you would.
Okay.
Has everybody known kind of where we're at?
I think everybody can hear me from here, so I won't use a mic to yell at anyone. So if you have a copy of the proposed budget for 2022 from, for Fanning County this year, if you take a look down your left side of the expenditures for the general fund, I'll just go over some of the areas that were increased and explain a little bit why those increases are involved. If you look at the Board of Elections, that has gone up quite a bit because there is going to be an election next year. So we have to incorporate funds for that, for the extra expenses in that office. And also in the public safety, that would be the sheriff, the county detention and jail, the fire services, emergency EMS ambulance, emergency EMA, 911. And that would be all the public safety that you will see there. There is a proposed 10% increase in the salaries for those, for those public safety employees.
Did you say the sheriff too?
The sheriff also is involved in that.
We've got one, two, three, four, five.
Right. And if you go on down, we also incorporated disabled American vets. That amount will be an $8,000 expense for fuel. So that has been incorporated into the budget this year or for next year. And one thing I'd like to point out is we have no bond payments. Those are, that is currently zero, and we hope for that to stay there. That is a big accomplishment for the county. The courthouse was paid off in April of this year, so that frees up that million dollars that was there. So we can use that for other expenditures in next year's budget. In the other expenditures you have there, you'll see a total of $10,374,813. That is expected, that's the total of the smaller funds there that you have expenditures in. That's what that total is for. And you also have American Rescue Plan Act for the 2021, that we received the funds, a little over $5 million. We got the, half of those funds this year, and we are expected to get the other portion, the 2.5 of that, of those, that 5 million, early spring is what I was told we'd be getting that. So we had to incorporate that into our budget this year also. That would be coming in under revenues and going out as expenditures as those funds are spent. And some of those, those are restricted for certain purposes. So we may not spend, may not be able to spend all that in a year or two. So you might see that go throughout the budget for the next couple of years as the deadline on that, I think it's 2026 to spend those funds.
And what was that?
Pardon me?
Which bond was that?
That is the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARCA for 2021, the federal funding. And then also we have tourism product development in the amount of $480,000. That is an estimated or an anticipated amount that will be, we will be getting from the tourism here in the county, hopefully coming in. And that will also be restricted to certain expenditures by law, that, yes.
And that is in addition to the 4 million above it for the hotel motel excise tax?
Yeah, I, we have to keep those in separated, separated funds by law.
Yeah, okay.
So that is in addition.
So we're basically looking at a hotel tax of about four and a half million dollars.
Right. You've also, yeah, we got, we anticipated 4, 4 million in the hotel motel tax, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less. Those are kind of just forecasted estimate amounts. We, we don't really know if the pandemic hits us like it did in 2020, you never know. Those, that revenue could go down, and we might not get that, so. And that's, that's the case with any of it, you know, just depending on how everything settles. And of course, you still have the splosh. And I looked at today on the Georgia Department of Revenue and pulled off the total amounts of the lost and the splosh that we get. And that is a major source of revenue for the county, both of those are very important. Those go for several uses and expenditures that we use that on. To date, on the splosh, just for this year, we've, we've collected over $8 million. In the lost, we've collected over $6 million to date, and that's just through November. As far as the other expenditures, and I forgot to elaborate on that, with the general fund, we talked about public safety, the 10% salary increases there. We did 5% salary increases for the other county employees across the board there. I think the Board just feels, this is proposed, this is a proposed 10% and 5% salary increase. Public safety is very important, and we find it very hard to retain the employees that we have. I think it's that way pretty much across the state. And if you don't have those employees and retain those employees, then if you hire other employees to come in, you have to send them out for training. So it's really, in order to retain those, it's easier to not have that training expense and then the shortage that would be in the services of the county to the citizens and everything also. So that impacts the quality of services for the county, the citizens of the county, if we don't, if we're not retaining those employees. And at this point, I feel the Board feels that it's, it's a good time to, to do this and try to retain those employees. It's, it's very hard to find public safety workers. Nobody wants to work in public safety anymore, and it's very hard to keep those employees. And I think this would be a good incentive for everyone, every, everybody there to keep those employees here. And as I said, with the courthouse being paid off, that frees up that million dollars, so that can be used also toward other expenditure items and some of the salary purposes also. Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Is that about to elaborate on there?
No, good job.
Professor Patterson, Keating?
No, I'm fine with it. Just to back up what she said, you know, we have to be competitive with, you know, organizations near us, City, Caswell, Blue Ridge, Yomar Union. And our employees are worth it. Like I said, it's, it's a great investment to be able to do that. And so that's what we're looking at. I feel a lot tonight.
Okay. With that being said, we'll open that up to comments from, from the public. Anybody want to come up and speak? Any questions?
I'm Joe Webb. I live in the Diner area in south of the county. In addressing the budget this year, I'm going to make some comments I've made in previous years. To have a one-page, non-comparative sheet on $37 million is not enough information. I have requested and received the last five years of budgets. And in looking at some of the things, it gives you some very interesting insights. And again, I'll look at this budget and look at certain departments and say, hey, there's revenue associated with, say, the recreational department. And the recreational department in the last five years has moved from 840,000 to 1,010 in expenses. And I know there's a lot of revenue there. The question would be, how much revenue has been built up to offset that? Or do we have a 25% increase in recreational expenses without revenue? It's a very simple question. If you look at a five-year trend, you can see that in some of your numbers. Animal control, on the other hand, which used to be a major beating dog, I'll say as a pun, it was at 235,000 in 2017, it's about 2.6 now. So it's come down some and remained level, which looks good. Tax assessor was at $1 million 19 in 2017, we're at 7.66. These are good things, but we need to know why they're happening, especially when at the last meeting, we voted to plug another $50,000 into the tax assessor to get outside help to maintain the law assessing every three years. Developmental authority, it's gone from 257 to 120. Now, obviously something happened there big, but do we know what it was? It was at 178 in 2020. So it's sort of been drifting down, but what is that? On the other hand, we know the hotel tax has come up. It's gone from $1 million to $4 million in revenue. So we know there's money there. We know basically that the bond is now paid off. So we could look at the library and say, okay, they were at 219,000 in 2017, they're 256. Well, nothing's happened there much except inflation, folks. We haven't done much. And I know we're looking at that, and as we look in the future, that will be a bigger operating cost. So all I'm saying is, I'd like to see a more comprehensive set of numbers from the county. I'd like, as a citizen, not to have to take five individual budget reports and put them on my personal handwritten spreadsheet. I have friends who put these in the computer, but that would be my direct skill. Mine's interpreting numbers and not putting them in. But basically, if we look at elections, yes, last year was not an election year, 2021. We had $213,000 in expense. This year, we are looking at an election year, we're looking at 428,000. Now, the question is, if you go back to the last election year, which is 2018, basically, I guess 2020 would do it also, but in 2018, on the four-year cycle, we were at 292. So we're up $130,000 for doing elections. Doesn't seem like the right, right bounce up. So again, I would have questions as to what that was doing.
I think that's also a service agreement that has come up, according to Ms. Connor. That's a service agreement that has come up, and that was an additional expense, and I don't have that number funded, I should have it. But that was a pretty large expense for the service agreement. But that just come up 2022. That's something we didn't have to have in the past because that, they were under warranty, from what I understand.
It's a big asterisk.
And it is.
Yeah. It's like when baseball went from 152 games to whatever they went to, and they went on steroids, they put asterisks on things and explained it. But that's what I want as a citizen, is I want more information, I want more clarity, I want basically, and I think this commission has done better than I've worked with, and I've worked with commissions since about 1998. We're working well, and I appreciate that. The information is available, answers are available. I'd just like us to see if we can come out with a more comprehensive format to actually put in the paper. I don't think 10 people are going to come to your budget hearing, I'm sorry. It used to be 15 years ago, you'd have 30 people here. But in essence, over the last 10 years, our government is stiff-armed. The citizens sort of push us back. So thank you, appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Glad I came.
You're the highlighter.
I know, we anticipated a few more.
That's why, I was going to say, my arm's too short to stiff-arm anybody, so you come on up and talk to me, all right?
Hey, like I say, I've had no problems this year so far. Like what?
We're thankful to be working with this group of commissioners here because they, it is, we, I think we all have the, believe it or not, I know it's hard for some people to believe, but we do have the citizens' best interest in mind, our county's citizens, we really do. And there's things that, you know, we, it don't look good on paper, but I guarantee if you come in, we, we will give you that explanation. We're trying our best to. If we don't have answers, I'll find them.
Do we know about what the revenue is for the rec. department?
Again, I don't have that, I really don't.
I think it's up in the couple hundred thousand dollar range, quite frankly.
And, and again, last year, the numbers were really down because they ended up basically, kind of like everybody.
Hey, the theater, we'll use 2019 as our budget year. We don't use last year, doesn't make any sense.
I think, Joe, though, if you look at, if you look at the budget that's been prepared, especially when she, when she was telling us about the money that's been collected off of tourism, for instance, that's a lot of people coming in here. And so there's a lot of people using a lot of the facilities that's provided to them by the county, the cities. And, and so with that amount of people that come, there's going, the cost, and everybody's getting over the COVID thing, and everybody's wanting to get back out. So rec., on the rec. side of it, I can see, I can see what you're saying, you need more clarity. But then again, if you logically just look at some of those numbers, it offsets, if you look like on the, the amount of people that's coming in here and spending money in our area, it's, our roads has taken a beating, our, our playgrounds have taken a beating, so.
Yeah, and it's good that we have splosh in the tourist park, part of that, and road development.
Exactly.
No, it's all very necessary, I'm just going to say, I know we had a fiscal problem in the rec. department four, five, six years ago, whenever it was, and part of it was we just weren't doing good accounting. We weren't keeping up with the revenues properly in the rec. department.
I understand.
And I know there's some expenses. But that said, I also know that for them to put on more programs that they charge for, they have to have more expenses. If I had to sell a play at the theater number six, I'm going to have to pay royalties and all that there now. My expectation is my revenue will overcome it. So that's what I'm saying. They're one of the few departments that generates that kind of revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Joe, I, I do have the revenue here for this year. So far today, I print this off, it's around, probably around 275, 280 so far.
And that's 2021.
That's 2021.
Which is still a down year for revenue at the rec. department. So that shows you what this is, the thing that is.
But the referee calls to them, the thing at the rec. department is almost doubled.
Goes in, goes out.
Again, you have to pay them extra.
Yeah.
To be able to get those folks in. You're just giving them for 20 bucks and now 40.
Just for toilet paper and towels from the city park down here, doubled, over 20 now.
That's not killing all the, all the disinfectant that's been, you know.
I mean, revenue is one thing, the cost is a whole other.
Everything's went up, so.
But this is significant, and I feel as a citizen, it's a new profit tracking and forecasting. And it'll be somewhat like the hotel tax, it will be on the east end somewhat.
Yeah.
And you basically do a best estimate, and then you do adjustments, and it looks
I do have a small question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I have a pretty narrow field. I don't know about all the other departments here, but I'm curious as to why animal control's budget is so low.
Well, if you, if you actually look at the line items in the budget, and I'd be glad to get that for you. So we, we were able to save money. We were able to save that money and apply larger numbers in other line items, okay? I know our, our salary line item, a couple years ago, was actually most of that budget. And we were able to, to save a little bit there, made a few changes, and, and were able to shift some of that money over. I mean, realistically, and I'll be glad to get that to you and show you line items and see exactly how the money was, was moved over. So, you know, we, we went into the animal medical, we, you know, boosted that line item up, we went into training. And again, be more than happy to just print that off and show it to you. Because I, I think, even though it's, it's stayed roughly the same, there's a lot more money being shifted to the, to the areas that was needed, so.
Well, yeah, my concern is that, you know, they're hitting it, but, and so they're getting more dogs into there, you know, and, you know, hopefully we're getting them out to rescue. But that increase in turnover in dogs, you know, it's really going to need to be boosted up. I saw a picture where the, the steel sink, that three-basin steel sink is in place. Has it been hooked up yet, or?
No, ma'am, we're waiting on the maintenance department to get time to go do that.
Okay, that was going to be another question.
We're trying to get that floor done to be able to set it there. And, and if you'll remember, we, we moved some of that other stuff, by the way, too. But our hopes is just as quick as, as Mr. Hawkins and them can get over there and get that done.
Okay, because I was hoping some things could be improved over there, and when I saw this budget, I, my hopes got dashed.
Yeah, I don't, I think if you'll just be patient, you'll, you'll see even more improvements at what's already been made this year.
You said that before.
Yeah.
Takes time.
Do you remember, do you remember January, when you, what it looked like in January?
Everything in government takes time.
Takes time.
It's like a turkey cooking all day.
Guess what? Guess what? I've heard that from, for the first time.
There's one guy. Big squirrel. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to agree with Joe, to have a comparison of last year to this year, the budget. I think that kind of helps people, you know, get a handle on it better, what's more, what's less.
Well, you can do that.
Yeah, that's what can be done.
No, I'm going to go with the rec. request for a specific policy, if I can. I'm appreciative of this. Yes.
All of our budgets are on the one side.
I would like, Mike Hornberg, public comment, if I could.
Yes, sir.
And, and again, I'm using a five-year comparison. In 2017, we spent more on animal control than the library. So basically, I say animal control has had a large priority for a long time. Now, this next year, we're spending more on the library than on animal control. But it's taken us 20 years almost to reverse that trend. And again, it's not that the animals don't eat it, but basically, we've ignored the library. So I'm glad to see this commission paying attention to the library. Thank you.
Believe it or not, we're trying to do it all.
I know. And that's the balance in that, thank you very much.
Don't worry.
That's why we're laying it down.
I mean, I, I know all three of us have been out there trying to collect aluminum cans to see if we can make it happen.
Well, I, I just want to say one other thing. I know the revenues, to me, we were just like blown away when we saw it, because the revenues have kind of exploded. And that's something that you really can't forecast, but with the art funds and the tourism coming in, and the hotel motel splosh and lost, it, they've really exploded this year. But if you, if you go back down and you take that equation out of the American Rescue and the tourism, they go back down to about 32 million. So it, it kind of looked really out there this year.
Yeah. I would want two other calculators to make sure.
And, and we're trying, just like animal control, or even the library, Joe, we're, you know, you're trying to focus on these departments and, and places that need attention, and there's just not one or two. All of them need it. And, you know, it's trying to find all this stuff to, to make a balance out to help everything, you know, is what we're, we're trying to do. So, I mean, and hopefully, we've got more to do at the animal control and, and at the library. So we're trying to, we're trying to be as honest and open as we can with it.
And this is foundation year. Next year, we literally have to vote on new splosh. We have to consider whether or not we do a T-splosh and rearrange how we do the infrastructure within the county, with the county and the cities. So there's a lot of big work in front of us. And I guess the thing that gives me the most comfort is y'all are working properly and hard. Plus, we got a raising revenues chain coming at us, basically, not from the taxes, but from all the side of things. And quite frankly, you know, there's another percent in hotel tax that we could do in the future sometime as we look at it. We don't have the bond now. And quite frankly, the library was on this ground when they tore it down and took the property to build the courthouse. So, you know, it's a big circle.
Yeah, but we're trying to work those, work, you know, those things out.
Oh, yeah, we paid off the courthouse. Now, we've got that worked out.
And we have three newly elected people back here in the back that we're going to be working with on the sales tax or the splosh and stuff. So, I mean, you know, we're all trying to work together to get this thing for everybody, just not Fanning County, just for, for everybody, cities and all.
Yeah, Ron is only, well, I actually may have been on it back then, but we actually had the city council meet as part of the county commission to look at the T-splosh last time. So they've already taken one look at that at the city level. So hopefully, we can take another look at it this year, make decisions if we have an act.
I don't know a lot about that, man, on that T-splosh, but.
It works for some towns.
Yeah.
I know.
Basically, it's something David Ralston pushed into the legislature in 2015 with a new bill. It allows a 1% sales tax just for transportation. And if you look at us historically, we used to do the roads out of the general budget. But basically, when we bonded the courthouse, we had to have that general budget 1.1, 1.2 million a year to pay the bond, so we switched the road carpet over to the splosh, which is perfectly appropriate. The T-splosh is only for transportation. So if you were to take the T-splosh and put it into transportation, roads, bridges and all that, then you could take the regular splosh and put it in water or other infrastructure or basically add to the things that the general fund is spending money on now to convert it out. So basically, it's a whole new revenue source. It's 30 million bucks over five years, just like the regular splosh is. And then it lets you literally, as a county, address the infrastructure. If the sewer system in Blue Ridge fails, the county will probably fail. I mean, it's a big hole, and it's a big rub of that. So you got problems like that in the Caswell, Morganton, Blue Ridge, maybe we ought to have a county water authority that's basically a unified authority as we look at future budgets. Because everybody's spending a little bit of money, but we don't have a coordination system. And last I checked, we didn't really have contracts between the cities and the water authority. No one could find them if they were ever done. And they have yet to lose those back to me after public, uh, open register request for two years. So I don't know where we are.
Well, we're trying to find our way too. You know, but we're willing to work with both cities. We're going to, and Morganton, all three of them. So we're going to, we're going to try to work with all of them. That's what, that's what I think this board's wishes are. Mr. Chairman, if you're about.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if nothing else, a little bit after 6:00, we'll get on to our regular meeting. But I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the agenda, or budget, I'm sorry. All in favor? Okay, we're closed. So open the regular meeting. Mr. Patterson, Chair Ferguson.
Lord have my Father, we just, I want to start this regular meeting inviting you into our presence at this time. You're sovereign, you know all things, and you're good. And, Lord, you look after us, even when we don't do the right things. Lord, we pray for wisdom for this board. We thank you for the citizens here, the care about the county, to come out and, you know, put input that we can consider. And, Lord, we just ask you to go with us to each and every item, and that you put your hand on it, Lord, that we may be pleasing to you. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. If you join me, you can place a allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Gentlemen, before we get started, I need to amend the agenda. This will be an item, put an item number six on here. And it's a proven settlement in the federal opioid litigation. So I'll make a motion that we add item number six.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under unfinished business, number two, approval of the minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, a regular scheduled board meeting. Mr. Serchey, any here is old mission, you know the minute?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have it, thank you.
I'll ask for a motion that we approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, a regular scheduled board meeting.
Make your motion.
Ask for a second.
Check.
All in favor? Still under unfinished business, item number three, we have our EMS director, Becky Huffman. The award of the ambulance bid. And we're gonna look at some comparisons and go from there.
So we'll look them over, and they're pretty much identical, basically what we're asking for. I spoke with Custom Works, their bid came in at, it was one eighty-one hundred. And I talked to them and asked them what the difference was, and they had actually added in an item that we weren't requiring to do. It was a twenty-four thousand dollar item, which was gonna be that power load that you had to cut with them. And they thought that we were gonna need that added in, so to subtract that from the total cost that they had actually originally did. So theirs came down after you subtracted twenty-four thousand dollars to one fifty-seven, three twenty-eight. And first class came in, the medics truck came in at one fifty-eight five.
What was that, first to the big?
It was one fifty-seven, three twenty-eight. And then the medics truck came in at one fifty-eight five. They're pretty much identical. We called and spoke with Custom Works, they had had some issues in the past with some electrical stuff. They had a couple of medics actually catch fire in other areas, not ours. And they said that the person that had been responsible for all of that has been let go. And they guaranteed that we wouldn't have an issue with it again if we were to go with them. And then, you know, medics really hasn't had many issues or anything up to this point. So it's really the neck and neck looking.
How do you know?
We've had, we've had a few of both. We've gotten good service, we've had a few issues, mostly electrical with the custom works. But since they've let that person go, I don't really know what it would be, I don't know for sure what the quality would be after that. We have had some issues in the past with them, but we've had good service out of the medics truck. There's something that they're looking into right now, but it's not really gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be anything that, it's gonna be an issue with medics, the motor trucks that we have right now, I think it's gonna be another issue. So, but so they're neck and neck. I mean, we would really be kinda sticking our neck out a little bit, not knowing what custom works. They've assured us that everything will be in place, they've been really good with service. They've set people up if we've had issues with something other than the electrical. They've been pretty quick to get on, if we did have an electrical issue, they were pretty quick to get on it. Medics have had good service out of.
Any electrical problems remaining?
Not really, no, we've had, we've had one issue that's come up where they have straight fired the engine block, the heating block for the engine. And it's caused a little bit of an issue with the GFI, but they've talked to us and said that they'll, they can correct that on any of the ones that we've had. They do that because of the colder temperatures where the other trucks, because they're out in Indiana. So they said that they have colder temperatures, so it's one of those things that they.
Where's that other company?
It's out of Georgia, it's a Georgia-based company.
Custom Works, yeah.
Um, Custom Works is down there, I don't know if you're familiar with The Walking Dead, but it's down there. It, that's where it was filmed, is where they're out of. So, and it's actually just almost out of the store or that, but that's where they're at. They do have medics, the first class, they have a dealership type thing here in Georgia. But they're just, their main one where they're manufacturing everything is in Indiana. And they also have like sister places that are in North Carolina and stuff like that. But with custom works, they're just in Georgia.
Who was that that you told us about that had those up in North Carolina?
That's medics, that's the first class, that's the one that.
And that's who we got the other?
Yeah, we have two from them. And we never bought with first class, but with the company, it's almost like Ford, where you've got a dealership that deals with Ford vehicles. First class that we've never dealt specifically with first class. And we dealt with another one, they sold it off. We, and we've dealt with medics before, that type of vehicle, and their quality and everything. So they're neck and neck, it's just really gonna come, they're only, I've added it up, and I think the difference between them is one thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
You think they're both about the same?
They are, they're pretty much, other than us having issues with custom works in the past. I don't know what they would be recently. We did purchase two trucks, the one that y'all, the emergency purchases that we made, they were medics trucks. So if we wanted to keep our fleet with the same company, it would be medics that we would go with.
Or do you think about the same?
Yeah, yeah, they all pretty much, we can take, we're, we would have to pick these up in Indiana if we got them from medics. But we can take them to any of their satellite places to have them worked on, or they'll send somebody up to work on it if we need something done. And the warranty's pretty much the same, and everything's pretty much what we were asking for on it. So the only difference is, is that, you know, we've had a little bit of an issue with custom works, and we've not really had much complaint out of medics. But according to custom works, they remedied the problem that they've had down there.
And we would take this, I believe, we said twenty twenty-three, actually, right?
Yes, yes, unless, it would probably be that late. When we spoke with them, they said that the earliest that we could probably even think about getting a truck is November of next year, twenty twenty-two. So it's probably looking like it's gonna be January twenty.
Both companies, huh?
Yeah, both of them, they're just, they said the chassis, they can go ahead and put their name in for a chassis, but they said they probably won't even receive the ones that they've already got their name in for, before us, before June. So they said they're looking at not even getting a chassis until October, November.
Gentlemen, I feel like, looking at public safety here with our people here in Fannie County, and looking at what she has said, I feel like that the importance would certainly outweigh the cost of the thousand dollars. And I feel like that that would be something we need to at least look at very carefully. We don't want anything broken down or anything like that. And they've had some problems, electrical and custom. So I, I think the medics have been real good to you.
Yes, so far, we've had a good service out of them. We've got, currently, one spare that's a medics truck that we're, we're using pretty regularly. So it's a medics truck, and it's not really giving us any issue.
How many years have you had that truck?
Um, it was a, it's a two thousand and seventeen, I believe it is, so we've had it, oh, it's got over two. Yeah, it's got over twenty thousand miles.
Over five years, yeah.
I would agree with you on that stuff. Commissioner Patterson, I think that, you know, we've already given two medics trucks, hopefully pick up sometime next year.
Yeah.
And then this from possibly twenty twenty-three. I think trying to keep them all the same, just, hey, let's go through these and see what happens. Cause, and again, not going off on custom works, but they remedied the problem, so be it. But if we have, if we put two hundred thousand miles on a medic truck and really hadn't had any issues other, you know, other than normal wear and tear, sounds to me like a pretty good truck, so. And I think we've had issues on the custom works even after the two thousand seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, do you know when the last issue was, my chance?
The, the customers? Um, we had an issue with a electrical problem with the, that's where med four was down, and we couldn't use the liquid spring system in med four. Where, that was when we, y'all did the emergency purchases, because we had med four, which is a brand new truck, was down because of the liquid springs that they'd just installed. And they wound up actually having to send somebody up to fix it. And it took a couple, it took a couple of weeks to get it fixed, which they installed the liquid springs for us. And then they had to come back up and repair it again because of the electrical issue. So that was probably back in August.
Commissioner Serchey, anything else on that?
No, I feel good about it. Warranty, how long's the warranty?
Let me see on this one, on the medics, it's gonna be, their warranty is.
That handles electric?
It's, it's everything. It's, I had it wrote down in my office, six years, seventy-two thousand miles.
Six years?
Yeah, and then the paint is covered for four years, up to, up to four years for the paint. And then for custom works, their warranty is a little bit longer, but it was.
What's the mileage, gentlemen? That's, that's the biggest thing.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing.
I mean, we, we've had that in one truck for, you said it was two thousand seventeen, twenty-four years, with two hundred thousand miles on it.
Yeah, we not had any, any issues on it. I believe it was up to fifty thousand miles on the, and the other one was forty-two thousand. I think we put in the bid specs that they had to cover up to fifty thousand miles on the big units. But we'll put that on in a year, so if it's a front line truck, it'll be in a year.
Where do you go?
All right, well, that would end, so I'll make a motion, and this, I'm sorry, before we go, this will be out of the budget.
Yes, it's budgeted in.
We bought the other two.
Right, well, we were gonna do, I've got the money in budget this year for one med unit, and then it's already been budgeted for next year for another med unit. And this will be budgeted for twenty twenty-three, so it won't come out anybody's other than the budget.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we actually purchased the medics truck for one fifty-eight five. I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, number four, this is a contract with KCI Technologies Incorporated. Gentlemen, if you, if you looked at your paperwork, if you had, we all know the Newport Bridge has been out for a little while now. We've been trying our best to figure out how to get it running again. So we finally got a company that's become highly recommended. We've done some background checks on them, they do, they do really good work. It's KCI Technologies, and what they'll, they'll do is they'll give us solutions to take back to GDOT, if I'm pronouncing correctly, to take back to GDOT, to see if we can repair the bridge or if it has to be replaced. So if you can look on that, the contract, initial funding will be set, set at, and not to exceed the dollar amount of ten thousand dollars. So it, realistically, they're asking for ten thousand dollars, but it could be less, depending on the scope of the work that they do to, to get the solution to send to GDOT. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir, they're doing it by the hour, so.
Okay.
What was about the hours?
By the hour.
By the hour.
So that's what they work, by the hour?
And just, just so you know, the project management fee is a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour, and the construction supervision fee is ninety-five dollars an hour.
So we don't have any idea what the issue is until they open it up, right? It could, it could worse.
But this will be, this will be the first step in, in actually trying to come up with a solution to make that happen, so.
We have this covered within the budget to certain expect, expect.
It'll be, it'll be paid, paid out as splash.
Yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Serchey?
No, sir.
Anything else, Commissioner Patterson?
We need air bridges, we gotta, this is something we gotta have.
All right, well, that'd be, that'd be, and so I'll make a motion, enter into a contract with KCI Technologies. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Number five, Miss Painter, Special Water Aquatic Center.
I'm not here to ask for a lot of money tonight. This is the third time I've been here, good to see you back with the depth control on. Yeah, I'm up there, I know how difficult that is.
Yeah.
Last time I was here, I was talking about the feasibility study, and I think I've got another copy of everybody, but I think everybody got one of these last time I was here.
You got one?
Yeah, let me get it, bring it. So what I wanna talk about first of all is what is a feasibility study for a aquatics center? It's not just the location, it's the size. It, does the county need a facility like this? Can the county financially support a facility like this? Is it profitable for the county to have? And if you look through the feasibility study of the five or six pages, it gives us a whole list of what we're supposed to, to, what we're asking them to look at. Feasibility study can be anywhere from five thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand, depending on the scope of what we want them to look at. I know out the Recreation Department, back in nineteen ninety, when we did the first plans, and I think I gave y'all a copy of that before, it had twelve tennis courts, indoor and outdoor pool. We know that did not happen, so, but that's what we wanted out there. We also know we spent a lot of money out there on the ball fields that we're having to redo now, because it wasn't done correctly, we didn't spend the right amount of money at the time. Location for that facility might have been the best, may not, we don't know. But it's there, and it's a great facility, and we all love it. But, you know, talking about tourism, so you've got the tourist product development fund, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you don't use it, you lose it, correct?
No.
And.
I don't think that's correct.
No, on the tourist product.
It knows it, it rolls.
Do what?
It rolls.
Rolls over.
It does roll over, okay, okay. So we got four hundred and eighty thousand of that. But as I gave y'all before, and I've got a copy again, it can be used with these types of projects. And I'm thinking, to me, a feasibility study for an aquatic center is something we need to look at. You've been reading in the paper the last couple of weeks of the Copper Basin. The Copper Basin, they came up with a budget to redo the pool, the pool's been shut down for two years. Well, I've come to find out the budget that they approved will only do a pool half the size of what they have, because they're having to rethink that.
And not to interrupt you, how much was that, how much was that budget, are you familiar?
I think, do I?
Are you familiar with how much they were?
I don't know what the exact dollar was, I don't want to quote what was there, but I know whatever their budget they approved, they thought they were gonna be able to redo that pool. And now they're, and it was in the paper this week, they're only gonna be able to build half the pool. So they're having to rethink that. You go to Gilmer County, Gilmer County took their pool out two years ago down there. They had a budget somewhere around from what I understand, six to seven hundred thousand. Well, if you go down there, they're not building it, cause it came back in around two million dollars.
For a pool?
For their pool. Yeah. Also, here in the city, you know, we talked to some people, or the council did it a couple of years ago, about redoing the pool over there. And, you know, they could get it patched and up and running, they thought, for fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere within that neighborhood. Well, just recently, we had three pool companies in the southeast that do municipal pools. They looked at it, they did the size of the pool, and they came back somewhere between seven hundred and a million dollars to do the outside, outdoor pool. Which, right now, if you were to contract to do a pool, you're probably gonna be two years out, because all the contractors are so far behind. What I'm asking is, and, and I'm sure you read it in the newspaper, but I'll give you a copy of it. But, uh, I did take it to the city council. I did get a vote to spend the money as long as the county and as long as the school system, all three entities agree to do the feasibility study. So what I'm looking for is for the county, the school system, and the city government to do a feasibility study to see what we really need so we don't make a mistake. I don't think any entity needs to be building something of this magnitude and the possibility of putting it in the wrong location or not doing the, uh, proper size or equipment or whatever it may be. But we're not just talking about a pool, and I think that's something that a lot of people don't really understand. If you go back to the tourist, uh, grant of the money, it's auditorium, it's a meeting space, it's all the things that we don't have in this county. Our chamber meetings, they go to brass down dial. We don't have a place to have fifty people at a meeting. And that's what this facility would be able to do. You could do it in stages. And, you know, I have no problem, though, Mr. Patterson came to a meeting I had out at the, uh, farmer's market early back in April. I have no problem with putting it out to the voters to vote on. I think, I think it will pass because the people understand, you know, our population, our age, our kids, what we need. I don't think we need a pool for two and a half months that we spend seven hundred thousand dollars on. That's just my opinion. I think we need a full, enclosed facility. It can have an indoor and outdoor, it can be built in stages. It can have all the things that we're looking for, but, you know, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a, uh, the money doesn't have to come this year, that's what they said. Once we decide to go forward with it, it will take them up to a year to do a feasibility study. Because they come into the county, they interview people, they look at our current facilities, they look at our population, they look at our income, they look at our hotel motel type, what the difference of our budgets were this year versus last year, what our revenue is. So it's a total feasibility study. But I think that's one of the problems that we've had in this county over the last twenty or thirty years. Putting the library in the courthouse, may have been right, may have been a mistake, we don't know, but now we've got other issues with it. And I think the feasibility study is what we need. Uh, the aquatic center, I mean, what I intend is a, you know, eight to ten million dollar project. I personally believe that if I can get the three entities to agree to do the feasibility study, that I can more than likely get a million dollars donated. I gave y'all, the last time I was here, I think we all, uh, talked about, uh, Lumpkin County. Is that correct?
Correct.
So on the back of that feasibility study that I just gave you right there, on the very back of it, there's a, there's a copy of the Cottle, uh, complex that was just building, approved over in Delonica. It's an eight million dollar project. Twenty-five percent of the money comes from donations, but people cannot donate, they cannot get a tax deduction unless we have a project. If I had the county and the school system all to agree to do a feasibility study, we could immediately start collecting funds as a five oh one C three, as a deduction. And I think we're missing out on opportunities. Now, the current complex that we have, the rec center, I said I love it, I'm out there all the time. Nineteen ninety's when we drafted the plan. We first started in eighty-eight. We didn't build it to walk roughly two thousand two before we got in there. That took twelve years. And if we're sitting here thinking about swimming pools and feasibility study and aquatic center, if we wait till six months or we wait till a year, I mean, it, we're gonna be another tenure down the road. None of us will be probably here when this facility is built. But it's gonna take two to four years to get it built. I say we take it to the voters, but the voter, voters decide. I've got a committee, a group of people, probably a hundred to a hundred fifty people right now, most of them you know, that are all in favor of this. They're all willing to work to gather money, raise money, put this facility together. Uh, the great thing about it is if we put it together and decide that it's not what, what we want, we can give them the money back, but we don't wanna do that. We wanna get a feasibility study done first, and that's what we gotta have. So I'm basically here, asked it new to make a motion, spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars, one-third of the cost. The cost may only be sixty thousand to do a feasibility study for an aquatics and wellness center for Fanning County.
Who does the study that you speak of?
There are about ten groups in the country. The group that I gave you, if you look at the list on the front, these are all the feasibility studies that are done in the last twenty-four months in Georgia. They're one of the tops in the United States. Uh, they're based out of Colorado, but we would put it out for bid. We would complete what we want them to look at, which would include all of our current facilities, and then we would send it to them. We'd put it up to bid to all the feasibility study groups that are coming to the bid and make the decisions.
Where's this location? Is it gonna be inside the city or is it gonna be in?
Don't have it. We don't have a clue right now.
Because, you know, that's, that's, I don't wanna tie Fanning County up with, uh, you know, uh, is the city, is the city gonna have, uh, you're, you're basically asking for a partnership?
Uh, that's exactly what I'm asking for. Cause we don't know, that, that's what the feasibility study will tell us. The feasibility study may have told us when we built the, when we built the current, when we built the current, when we built the current Recreation Department, the feasibility study may have told us to put it in a different location at that time, instead of down there where it was put and we have a water problem and a drainage problem. But also, you know, we really have a water problem out there. We don't, we can only expand so much.
That is another thing that I was thinking about.
Cause the infrastructure and the water. It would probably, you know, if you look at feasibility studies, and I've done a lot of research on them over the last six months, if you look at them, the, one of the first things is where's the county seat? Where is the high school? Where is the middle school? Well, when you start adding all that together, then I would think that the, uh, center would be somewhere located with, close to the city, I believe. Maybe within the city, maybe outside the city. You know, we've got property up here on the Four Lane, we've got several pieces of property.
But that's, that's what gets me about, so, let's say it's in the county.
Yeah.
Who's gonna, who's gonna?
Would the city go with the county? If we went in the county or something like that, but, and, and again, I'm, I'm not, we're, we're gonna talk about this. Cause I remember at last meeting, if, if you guys go out there, the school money and the city money is not going with you. It wasn't those exact words, but it was pretty close. And, and I was telling a tweet, I mean, if we're looking at partnership, uh, with all three of us, it really doesn't matter where it goes as long as we have that, but that's, that's what was said.
I have no thought.
At that last meeting when this aquatic center was brought up.
I have no thought that can be put anywhere.
So, and all I'm saying is, I, I would rather, and, and this is my opinion, so y'all, y'all figure out what you want, it, it, it's up to y'all. What I would rather do is have a workshop with the Board of Education, the City Blue Ridge, uh, Board of Commissioners, sit down and hash out, there's, there's a lot of unknown questions, uh, unknown answer, whatever. There's a lot of unknowns before we even get to the feasibility study. And, and that's something that we really need to sit down, okay? So let's say, let's say it's ten million dollars, we'll go on that. You got a million dollars donated, that still leaves nine million dollars.
Nine million dollars.
Okay, all right. So county comes up with three and, you know, no offense to anybody else, we may be struggling to come up with three at that time. Is the City Blue Ridge, can they come up with three?
Don't.
Can the Board of Education come up with three? And that's what I'm saying. They, we're, these are things that we need to really sit down before we get to a feasibility study. To, in my opinion, if we're getting a feasibility study, we're ready to move. That, that's, that's the point right there is, how about we sit down and hash out some other things first before we do the feasibility study and then go forward?
I wanna know why, well, why wouldn't the county be a part of it? I'm not saying they would.
Mike, have you talked to the high school?
Yes, I have.
Have you talked to county board?
Yes.
Or what have they had to say about this?
They wanted me to go to the city and come to the county and then come to the school.
I would, at this point, like to take advantage of, with the help of Mayor Delet in the back, uh, I'd like to hear her thoughts on that. Ms. Rhonda?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Hensley. I feel like we should all get together and have a workshop and discuss. I know the city's budget is very limited and we have five million dollars in upcoming sewer and water projects that we have to do upgrades to keep our, you know, our systems going, just like you mentioned. And so, to me, it would be a big concern that the city doesn't have the funds, if, even if, you know, we got the funds for the feasibility, but for the project itself, where would we fit in that equation? Because our budget is not as big as, as the school boards or the county, and that's my biggest concern.
But you guys would, had to vote it in to, to go with twenty-five thousand?
There was a vote, um, it wasn't a unanimous vote by the council, there was a trade too, but, for the feasibility study. Um, but again, I feel like before you spend that up to seventy-five thousand, you should understand the plan, just like you mentioned. How would it play itself out, even if, if, if we are able to get this together? How is it going to, what's the follow-through? And, you know, who's going to, uh, pay for all the expenses once it gets in place even? And how will we all contribute even to that when our budgets just aren't equivalent?
The feasibility study is to determine where, where, and, and things like that, it's not?
No, they also do the other part of what, if you'll go through that list. Cause they do, they do a combination, one in Lumpkin County, they did a feasibility study. And it's Lumpkin County and the city of Delonica, and then they've got the local organization.
Mike, I think Johnny was kinda, in any way, looked over at this. Who, who's gonna run this thing? We got three entities, okay, you're talking about. Who's gonna be in charge of the day-to-day, day-to-day administration of it? City, the county?
Well, I think you put a board. You put a board together to do that, and then you, you have somebody from the city, somebody from the county, somebody from the school board to run together. We'll never have a facility like this unless it's the three entities. If the school system builds the facility, we won't be in that facility and you, you understand that.
Right.
And that's the whole scenario. And the school system, they will have an aquatic center in the next ten years.
They told me that, so let's.
They told you that already? Yeah, it's gonna happen, but we won't have access to them. Our citizens won't be going out there and using it at seven o'clock in the morning and six o'clock in the morning because we wouldn't park.
Let's see, flip over this one more page, and it's just, you know, food and water. So, you know, it was aquatic wellness center.
Right.
Okay. So at what point do we reach out to somebody, if it's gonna be a wellness center, what point do we reach out to somebody like Northside or Peatmont? Um, to say, hey, there, would you, this is a wellness center, uh, we would have a, a portion of this to, to help, uh, in that city. You see what I'm saying?
And you, and you can't, and you can't.
Larger pictures than, and, you know, who's to say that in our area right here that you get a large hospital and they wouldn't be interested in doing that?
And, you know, the hospital, that's who owns the facility and layer for that.
Mm-hmm. So, so that's kinda what I'm getting at. That's where we sat down and tried to put our heads together before we get to this feasibility study. And, and we said, hey, do we wanna part of it be a wellness center? Um, you know, we, do we want this part of it just to be for our citizens to come out and enjoy all the time? Um, is this part gonna be, because if you, and, and look at the timeframe as well, um, any, any swim team that I've ever saw, they come early in the morning, swim practice, about thirty, and then in the evening, it is, it's swimming. So, if we had that, and, you know, I, first of all, let me jump back and catch myself here just a minute. I'd love to see this. At some point in time, I really would. But, there again, when we have a, a, a program in the morning and then we have swim lessons from one to two, and then from, we only have from two to five for the citizens to come together, you see what I mean? So, if we, if we look at it, let's, let's really think about who the partners could be. And let's have a workshop and get everybody together and then, you know, get the input from the citizens. Cause when it's all said and done, the citizens want it, gonna, I mean, it's for them. And to get their input.
Call a workshop.
Before, before we do, uh, and again, that's just my opinion, but before we spend that twenty-five thousand dollars, let's get some input from the citizens. Let's have that workshop, whether it's here or wherever, let's have that. Let's, let's reach out. If we're gonna make a wellness center part out of it, let's reach out to a hospital and see if they're interested. Um, before we actually do that. And then, the more partners you have, obviously, the more control somebody wants. You gotta figure that out as well, you know, if it's a board that you set up and it's a board. But I, I just, I, I personally feel that we have to take this step before we can get to the feasibility step. That's, that's just me personally, so, and I'm not knocking you in the head, I promise you. I'm just saying.
So you're saying like a, like having a, uh, workshop, you know, people can come out and voice their opinion?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're gonna have to have all the answers. Because, I mean, they're, they're, one of the first questions, where's the, gonna be a work place? Well, we don't know.
Exactly. That's what we need to set.
That's what feasibility study tells you. I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't.
Well, maybe, maybe.
But I have no problem with still a workshop. I'm fine with that. But I'm saying the first question's gonna be, just like, where's the library? Where's, where's this facility gonna be? Is it gonna be Elkhurst or is it gonna be in the casual?
And I know where it was wanting to be up to this point.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know that for a fact, cause that's, that's all I've heard this whole year. This is where it's gonna put it.
The, what? What we're doing?
Like, we were talking about the?
Talking about the farm.
Yeah.
Close to the high school, infrastructure, water.
Uh, maybe the county could sell the property across the street.
Maybe, maybe the building that the county owns. That'd be a great facility right there.
No.
Across the market. But my point is, one, the first question.
Is where it's gonna?
Where is it gonna be? We have no clue. I mean, we spend money on sidewalks, we spend money on everything, we've got money that could, we can use. The city's already voted in it. I'm not asking you to give the money, I'm just asking you to agree to spend up to that if we can get the school board on board. And maybe the school board comes back and says, we will do it as long as we have a workshop. But that's up to y'all.
I feel like we need to, like, uh, Chairman Hensley said, we need to get together with the, uh, high school or with the Board of Education and, and see what their thoughts are on that. They may wanna move full guns ahead very soon, you know? You said two or three years. I don't know what they think, okay? Be honest with you, but we need, there, there is some unknowns that we need to discuss. Not just where it's at, but how we're going to divide it up, like Chairman said, you know? You know, are we gonna, are we gonna get just a fraction for our citizens and the high school's gonna do most of the, you know, have most of the time and, uh, you know, all, all a lot, a lot of.
I talked to the guy that put the program together in Delonica and their thought process there, and they've got North Georgia College as well.
Right.
Their thought process there is that, that the college and the high school facilities will have before six thirty AM in the morning. And then it'll be open to the citizens from, I think, seven o'clock till, uh, two o'clock, and then school system's from two to four. And then go back to the public in the afternoon, which takes care of the school system. That's their, what they're doing there in Delonica right now.
And how did they fund theirs? Was it the T-Spot's?
Yeah, yeah, it's a T-Spot's and then they got, um, I haven't got the final number from, it's a donation from a family, but it says. But it says the donation was in excess of two thousand. But they, they voted, if you go back and look at all of it, they voted to build an aquatic center. And they did a feasibility study to determine the location of this facility. And then they started looking at ways to raise money, and then they had a family that came in and said, this is what we'll do.
Wouldn't it be good business if we, all these entities that are talking about this, or that Mike's talking about, if they had a, a letter of intent?
I think that, that would be great, and I think the current, the current phraseology is that you meet with your stakeholders. So, you'd have to have a call, it, it might be good to have a call meeting with the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, the two cities to see, you know, who are, who are your stakeholders, who has money that they can put, you know, the... I remember back in the eighties, that we're looking at whether or not we could build another landfill in Fanning County. And only suitable soil was up off of its suches. So, you know, that made no sense. It didn't happen. So, it may be that some, a feasibility study would say, hey, it's great. The best idea is across the street from Ingalls, or next door to Ingalls, out there next to, um, North Georgia College. I don't know what that property's for sale. So, feasibility as the best idea versus what's realistically available may not be the same thing. But I think you, you, the smart thing is to find out who your players are. Cause who your players are determines what your funding sources are.
Exactly. And see, Mike, the only thing that bothers me, I, being an employee of the city for so many years, I know that the city's got some dire needs. I know that infrastructure's one of their main problems that they're gonna be facing. And I also know that without the building that's went on, sewer's been a major problem. And we're working on the, the Water Authority expanding it. And we have all these other projects, and I just, it's not that I'm against anything. I'd love to see something like that too. I mean, I, 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 I want Fanning County to have everything for its citizens. But then again, I, I, the only financial part of it is what commitments from everybody that's got a, in this, that we're asking. I don't wanna go out there just single by myself, you know?
And I'm not asking out there. I mean, so like, when we first did the recreation department, we came out, we put it to the vote. We got beat by a hundred and ninety-eight votes. The citizens voted it down, and they didn't want it. And then came back four years later, or six years later, and got it, but we didn't. But, all I'm asking for is a feasibility study, but you don't wanna do a, I have no problem with that.
Well, I'm for the, I mean, I, I would like to see something like that in our county so we could hold different type of events. I mean, I think that it would be awesome. But the legal part of it, I just wanna make sure, that's why I asked you. I just wanna make sure that, I represent Fanning County, and I wanna make sure that these people, they voted for me to, they trust what I'm doing, and so I, I don't wanna lose their trust and, and, you know, I wanna be accountable.
You know, we, we may be, there may be some property out there. I'm sure we've found it. You don't know. There's a lot of stuff going on right now.
Right.
But you've gotta figure out before that's happened.
Yeah. No, I agree with you. I agree with you. I appreciate it, man.
So, I think you, I'm, so the answer is no, right, right now?
At this time, Mike, cause they've got a gentleman.
Mike, you know, we need unity in something like this, and, and this board is getting ready to go out, voted three-two. I would more like to see the new board have a vote on this first of January, whenever they wanna do it, and see what, what they feel about it.
I think it's on...
Because this was very narrowly passed.
Well, during, during the forum, they asked three of the current council members, they were all three for it.
I thought one of them was for a vote. Not, I mean, like, the other...
No, it was, there was three people asked about it. The question was the aquatics in, at the forum.
Well, you know, we got, uh, Ms. Thomas back there, she had a voice concern just a minute ago about finances, and, uh...
You can talk to Ms. Kay, who's gonna be running the parks for the city as well. But I, I have no problem. I'm good.
I appreciate it, Mike.
Okay. Uh, number six, um, Ms. Thomas, you're gonna have to help me on this, but it's, uh, it's approval settlement of federal opioid litigation.
And gentlemen, I profusely apologize that I received this at four-twenty-two this afternoon with a request that it come before this Board of Commissioners, before December the second. And it is an emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the distribu- of the distributor in Janson Settlement pursuant to the Georgia Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July twelfth, twenty-twenty-one National Opioid Settlement Agreement. And it is so voluminous that they direct us to a website. Uh, nationalopioidsettlement.com for anybody that would like to read more. And early on, we don't hear as much about the opioid problem today because many of the drugs have been pulled off the market. But when we literally had people overdosing on a daily basis, uh, suits started to be fraught. I believe you were on the commission, Mr. Patterson, but it may even predate you when Fanning County voted to, uh, participate in the opioid litigation. And initially, the state of Georgia didn't participate. And there were several, there, there were more counties in Georgia than not that participated as individual counties, as well as cities. Uh, then the state of Georgia did participate. Well, initially, we literally, our suits filed downstairs and disappeared court here. But as these things all got filed, we got consolidated, and I can't tell you how we ended up in federal district court in Ohio, but that's the district courts that are handling these cases, uh, out of Ohio. And there has been one settlement that has taken place, and for whatever reason, we weren't deemed to have any of that drug distributed here because primarily it was distributed through Rite Aid. And then, um, this settlement is with McKinn- Mackinson Corporational, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBargain, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Jensen Pharmaceuticals, and Ortho McNeil Jensen Pharmaceuticals. I can't tell you how much dollars any one entity is going to get because they don't know who is actually entering into the settlement agreement. But, so then after Georgia came into the lawsuit, Georgia said it wasn't gonna participate in the settlement. In the last two, three weeks, Georgia has said, no, we aren't going to participate in the settlement. So now, we're literally being asked to adopt this emergency resolution that will impart allow the state of Georgia to enter into, uh, the settlement. And it, in importance, it says the people of the state of Georgia and its communities have been harmed by misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance committed by certain entities within the opioid pharmaceutical supply chain. And the state of Georgia, through its attorney general and certain local governments, which would be you, through their elected representatives and council, are separately engaged in litigation seeking to hold opioid, opioid pharmaceutical supply chain participants accountable for the damage caused by their misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance. And this would authorize the attorneys that are representing both the state of Georgia and the various counties within it to move forward with these negotiations and settlements. Uh, I was talking to Ms. Walker earlier. It's not why I go and I have a seat at the table. Gilbert County has somebody that has a seat at the table, and the Cav County does. The, uh, federal district court appointed representatives or trustees to represent the counties as a whole, or the states as a whole. So, basically, this authorizes us to continue and move forward. I was talking to Glenda as I was walking up the steps, I can't tell you we get five dollars, five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars. But we get any money that can be used to help in any way with the overall health, overall health of our community is a good thing. And I'm sorry to spring it on you last minute, but I'm really glad I got it at four-twenty-two today as opposed to having to ask you to come back tomorrow.
Are they asking, are they asking for anything from us other than approval?
In other words, there are no costs to this.
There's absolutely none. There's absolutely none.
And everybody's lining up with it?
Everybody's lining up with going forward. The settlement hasn't been approved yet.
You got that resolution, you wanna read it? Is it in Lumpkin?
Well, it's more pages than you probably want me to, but I'll be glad to read it.
Well, just summarize it, give you the key points.
Well, I think this is, um, whereas Fanning County understands that a purpose of this agreement is to create an effective means of distributing any potential settlement funds between the state of Georgia and its local governments in a manner and a means that would promote an effective and meaningful use of the funds in abating the opioid epidemic throughout Georgia, as well as to permit collaboration and explore potentially effective early resolution of the opioid litigation against opioid pharmaceutical supply chain participants. I mean, every, I'm all for the Attorney Full Employment Act, but every day that this goes on, thousands of attorneys get paid, thousands of bankruptcy trustees get paid, thousands, because some of these companies are in bankruptcy. Thousands of dollars get wasted as opposed to getting them back into our communities.
So, we ain't gonna get nothing?
Oh, well, no, I think we get something. I just don't know. I mean, our size compared to New York City is what you gotta look at.
I appreciate it.
I, I, I think it's a favorable thing for our county.
I'm talking.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the emergency resolution, the settlement in the federal opioid litigation.
Make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Sir.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, public commentary. You got something to say, raise your hand, come up. Ms. Young?
He broke his pen.
Yeah, broke. Here you go.
Am I, am I playing?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Young, or Libby Young, depending on who's talking to me. I live on Bluebird Road in Mineral Lot. And I typed this up, it looks so nice and pretty, but I'm gonna kinda wing it. And this isn't gonna cost a nickel, so you don't even have to put anything down. It's gonna be great. Uh, our friends at Animal Control, of course, uh, used to have a Facebook page. Now, you think that's no big deal, but it really is because rescues want to be able to see every dog at every animal control facility. All the rescues are full, all the shelters, animal control shelters are full. And it, it's like a competition. How are we gonna get rid of our dogs? Cause we don't want the killing machine that we had just a few years back. Uh, we're trying to keep as many alive, get them pulled, get them out of here, and we only have a three-day stray hold. So, if you were to lose your dog, you have three days to locate it. And if you go on, uh, the existing Facebook page we have right now, that is around, that is quote-unquote owned by two volunteers who can yank that, and we would have nothing. So, the Facebook page that we had for Fanning County Animal Control was taken down by John Durellinger, uh, several years ago. You know, there was some tussle and feathers were flying, and so he was yanking it. It still actually exists, but you have to have the password. Now, here, here's the big problem. It had a, a, a very large number of followers. And, which is important, uh, for res- you know, for animal control because that means, that's that many rescues and people that are interested. And so, you want all of them to come to your page, see your dogs, and get them out. Uh, so, right now, we're kind of at a, a precipice where these two gals, you know, they're, they're kinda thinking, I'm just gonna pull the plug. You know, there's, I don't know what the problem is. I don't wanna know. But anyway, we need to get that back up online under Fanning County's, uh, Animal Control's official Facebook page.
Is that our page? Does that say Fanning County Government's page?
Yes, it did. It was Fanning County's.
Yes, it did.
And who's over control of this?
John Durellinger was.
He ain't here no more.
Yeah, I know, but he's got the password.
Can we not fix that?
Uh, you'd have to get it from him. He has to be able to release.
There were thousands of followers on that page.
And, let's just look at worst-case scenario. Let's assume that he obviously won't get it back to us.
Okay.
All right. Start a new one, right?
Yes. You start all over.
Did it, do, can you use the same name? I mean, can you...
Yeah. You could use the same name. Uh, however, you know, my devil, devil's advocate here, if he got a wild hair and said, well, let's really mess things up. I'll just crank it back up again, then you'd have two.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a second.
If there are two John Smiths.
Wait a minute, wait, wait. Well, it's on my mind. Please, give me just a second. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
If we have an official Fanning County anything, can anybody that's past president or whatever have any kind of access to, like Mr. Dillinger's supposed to have this thing? If it's, if it's represented and says Fanning County Government, is there not some kind of liability issues with this board? Or this, or our chairman does not approve of it?
Well, see, the issue you have is this is with a third-party vendor that we can't control. I mean, I could go and make out on Facebook and make something that says, the city of McCasey's official Facebook page. And, well, frankly, Facebook doesn't care who I am. Now, I don't know if, has anybody asked Mr. Durellinger for the Facebook task card?
No, but we will do that tomorrow.
That'd be real nice.
Oh, I, I don't think anybody ought to have access to, uh, what's said on these pages that, that says Fanning County Government.
I, I totally agree with you because the chairman and I would have this conversation because if it's an official Fanning County page...
We're over that, and you're, you're over that.
Then it's subject to open record.
True.
And you can't, if, if there's somebody that starts talking about, we've got this crazy volunteer, and her name is Libby, and she did blah, 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 blah. I can't take that down. I can't.
Well, let me ask you a question. Where does the liability follow something after? Is it gonna fall back on Fanning?
Maybe I don't think it falls on. I don't think there's, well, one, you've got sovereign immunity, so I don't think there's any liability per se. But I, I totally agree that it's a great venue or a means for sharing information. Uh...
I thought we had all those.
But I just don't, I mean, my first thought is, let's just reach out and ask him to give it back to us. Or facilitate with resetting it if he doesn't know how.
She's able to reset anything, right?
Well, you got the original page.
Gonna have a...
Those Facebook pages are tied to personal Facebook accounts.
So, he didn't say that that is a business account or whatever? It said government on it. Yes, it did. And he was an employee of the county, so go figure. Yeah, everyone said government page. Somebody should've been watching it more closely, and I know y'all weren't there, Mr. Patterson was. But it said Fanning County Government on it, and it had about four thousand followers, as I recall. We need them.
I'm just saying that nothing, nobody should be flying the flag that Fanning County Government are doing anything unless it's gone through this man's office.
This board's office.
Or this board's, well, we're looking at you.
And that one may have gone through the commissioners, you know, it's a different board, Mr. Patterson might be able to address that.
I, I tell you what, like I say, I'll be glad to reach out to him tomorrow and see if he'll give that back to us.
Other animal controls, other counties have their state maps, I guess they'll have them.
Ms. Thompson brought up a good example, and I'm gonna clear you right here. All right, so let's just say somebody does go off on, on Miss Young's, since you used her example.
I'm used to it.
How, how can we, how can you put a halt to that? I mean, can you, can you shut off the comments?
Yeah, there's a way to go, then shut off comments. And you do want people to be able to interact, that's the whole point.
I do that on the video.
We can cut off comments, we just can't erase comments once they're there. Because it, once it's out there, it's a record and, you know.
And that's fair, you know, and I, you know, I've never seen any dust-ups on Gilmore's. But, you know, I don't read every single post on it either.
We would be naive not to consider that that could become a possibility.
So, so let me ask you another question, just again, because I don't know. So, let, let's just say, comments are off, okay? But you have four thousand followers. So you could actually, and it happens all the time, I'm sure, that people screenshot posts and share it. And of course, those comments come up under the other person's post that they've shared, right? So, in, in that sense, I guess what I'm asking is, if we, if we turn off the comments, I, I mean, obviously, we, we'll take the positive and negative regardless, but if we did do that, and then, you know, if we posted an animal on there and, and Miss Young shared it, and Miss Eaton shared it, um, you know, wouldn't that be, would that be sufficient to do something like that, or?
Libby, I think what he's asking is, because we cut, we were trying.
I'm, I'm lost.
No, what, what if, and I haven't thought too, how, how valuable is the Facebook page if you can't make comments? If there's a number or something, you know, if you would like more information on Fluffy or Fida, call someone, so. Or direct message me, and, but not have a page, not have it where somebody could say, when can I see Fida? Or how do I adopt Fida? Because as I understand it, there's different formats for setting one up. And I don't know if this is a format that gets set up and an employee runs it, or another volunteer runs it.
Yeah, he can be sued. The county can sue him to get the password.
The thing, the thing about it is that, it's just like the Blue Ridge PD Facebook. I ha, I'm over the admin, so we don't allow any kind of negative, I can't get on there and say pigs and all that to us because we censor that, we block it. So, uh, you know, uh, there's things you can do that, that can be governed by that. And I think, uh, Sponge, you know, you know all about that, don't you?
Well, a little bit.
Okay, well, there's things that we can do to control that, I just don't think anybody ought to be able to go out here and fly that banner because, I mean, you just can't do that.
Well, I'll tell you this, how about we, how about we try that tomorrow, see if we can get that information? And then we, uh, I'm gonna get my IT guy on and, uh, see if he can help us out, but does that sound all right?
Yeah, I mean, that'll help because it, you know, if, if the volunteers' Facebook page goes down, we have no way of promoting.
And see, that's nothing to us.
Yeah.
That's nothing to me.
I know.
Only thing I want, I wanna know when you're using Fanning County Government's name. Because that's, to me, I'm responsible, one part of, you know, wheel.
Okay, now you're gonna be busy. All right, thank you.
We stay busy. Thank you.
There's things you wanna?
Well, I don't know if I have anything you want to say.
Oh.
Sure you do.
Do I need to come up there?
Yeah, that's right, you ain't no different, no bail, you just come right up there and scream.
I can't see that far back there if you want to.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you can hear me because I've got a big mouth. I totally support Libby and her effort on this because I truly believe that a Facebook page is needed. I've already come before y'all and given you my spiel. To move the animals, isn't that what we're after? We wanna move those animals out alive. And other counties do this. I think it should be an employee, I don't think it should be the volunteers. And my personal opinion is that it should be very objective. If you, all those animals need to be pictured, because you may lose your dog and you might wanna check tonight to see if it's there and then you want to be over there to pick it up.
That's cool.
That makes really good sense. But Libby and I have talked about this, and it should just be objective, no editorializing on this thing. Oh, it's a cute dog, it's a fluffy dog. No, you put a picture, you put the intake date, where it was found, and the gender. That's all you're gonna really know. You're not gonna know the breed, you're not really gonna know the age. You know, don't embellish it, just let it be what you actually know, the gender, the date it came in, that it's a dog, a picture. And what area of the county it was found in, that's, you know, that business comments or not, meh. You know, I see both sides of that. Get their pictures out there. What we've got now is an employee that says, when we say, no, there are rescue groups that wanna look and see what they, what y'all have got, and she says, have them email me. And we're like, oh dear God, how far back in history are we gonna go for your people? We're not, I'm a rescue group, or I'm part of a rescue group, I'm not gonna sit down and email somebody and say, what have you got? You know, I mean, I pulled three dogs from Murray County today in about an hour and a half, and it's easy when they make it easy. But our animal control doesn't make it easy now because we don't know what's there. They say either email or come in.
I still believe it's easier than it was.
Oh, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, for a rescue group, it is. For a rescue group, but don't get into the old, uh, here's, you know, there were issues back then. Just be objective, put only what you know for sure, and there's only four things you're really gonna know.
And Jen, seriously, is that sufficient opposed to the, I mean, I've seen them, I've looked at them, I share them. That's why I would cats, you know, and I've seen some that, is it appropriate to say owner surrender due to? Because sometimes, it, it, it may be, I'm asking you because I'm not a rescue group. Do rescue groups need to know why an animal came into a shelter? Is it a stray as opposed to it's an owner surrender?
Well, you might, you can put that, that's the fifth thing, you're right, you can do stray or owner surrender. That's good, that's good, you're probably on that, and that's good, I agree.
But I'm also, from what you're saying, I think it's good that more limited it is, the easier and faster it is for somebody to do. I don't need to try to find another adjective to describe Fluffy because I used Fluffy for the previous four, so this is what I wanna say, whack down it yourself.
Yeah, and, yeah, I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna get into a lot of things like that because then that does increase your liability, you know? If you can't back it up, don't do it, just be careful there. But, you know, for me personally, if I see a dog like that, I will private message the contact person. I know pretty much the animal controls I pull from and say, hey, what's the story? That's fine. Just get the pictures out there for our people so they can find their animals and so the rescue groups can see what you have. You know, so, I mean, I've got a transport leaving Friday. I have the option of pulling dogs to put on that transport, but I don't know what's at Fanning, and I didn't have time on taking care of the dogs at my house. I don't have time to get in the car and go to Fanning and look at every dog over there. And certainly, the groups in Atlanta aren't gonna drop up here just to see. They can go online and look, that makes it so much better. So, we're not asking for a lot, but let's get those animals moved, and that's my shit. Don't let them sit in there, they got dogs that have been there for a long time that need to be moved. There you go, but thanks, because if you get that password, you're, we're gonna get a lot of followers that we don't have.
See if we can link it up, miss.
That's right. And then, but if you put up a Facebook page, we can get those rescue groups on there, I can assure you, we can do that. We've got lots of contacts.
We'll start out with that first, and I ain't promising anything, and then we'll go from there.
We can just get something up there, but, you know, my advice is, it should be run by an employee. Somebody that is, you know, that y'all are already dealing with. That's, I got in trouble with volunteers the last time, and I'm slamming volunteers because I ain't one to, but, you know, I would keep it close to the best.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Webb?
Joe Webb, again, still living in Ohio. Uh, I'd ask down on that list, is the weight of the dog on the information list?
Um, I don't know, do we have a scale over there or not? If, if there was a scale that you get the weight, yeah, okay.
Weight would be very important as a dog adopter.
If there's a scale, that's a good idea, Joe.
Yeah, and I just saw Lily, ninety-pound and a ninety-five-pound Labrador couldn't be walked together by one person over the weekend. Uh, anyway, I have a question, and thank you for having comments after the meeting so we can actually ask questions about the meeting. Uh, are we always meeting in arrears on minutes? I just picked that up tonight, that we haven't really approved November ninth's meeting now. Uh, we approved the October meeting, so we?
Maybe that, no, that's what we did approve, November ninth.
Well, it says in the minutes that we approved October twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
Okay.
That's a typo.
So we are current on that?
You say October twelfth?
No, well, that's what it's on there.
Oh, yeah, no.
So that was actually November?
Yeah, we actually just approved those.
Well, I, I didn't know, because I, you know, so, and that, does it go on the website after approval?
It does. The next day, I sent it over to Candace and she's supposed to be.
And that's what I'm worried about, if it's good actual approval going website, we shouldn't be a month behind.
No, we're not, we should not be a month behind.
And you can't approve until you have the next meeting, we're good. Okay. Uh, I, I'll go back to my theater hat, please, and the excise tax product money. The theater is still a product. I know next year, we actually have product as a separate line item, four hundred and eighty thousand. I don't know if we have a good estimate for this year, but I'm gonna presume it's gonna range around three hundred and fifty thousand, something like that in twenty-one. And last year, the president of the chamber said it's about two hundred and fifty thousand as if it were product money. So we are actually looking at three pots of money now, two hundred and fifty from two years ago, three fifty from this year, and four eighty from next year. And I know we haven't, at least to my knowledge, set up any procedures, uh, for dispersing that money. And I would just simply like to say, the theater is still very, very interested in this half a year in funding for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant to do our parking lot. Y'all have the paperwork on that, and I ask that basically you work with us to see how we can make these decisions. Because, again, we're talking about now almost a million dollars in the product fund, not counting the rest of the excise tax. So, that's my request, uh, please work with us, we'd like to get a parking lot. And Lily, a path to the future, this is gonna be ongoing. We need to know how to act against the four hundred and eighty thousand for next year. Guarantee I have projects.
Thank you. Thank you. So before we go further, any public commentary? Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of November, November the ninth, twenty twenty-one, a regular scheduled board meeting. I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor? Anybody else want to come there?
The board of the?
Good evening. Currently it's snowing, but I know that you haven't heard enough about the aquatic center, so I thought I'd speak about it a little more. I don't think anyone can argue with Aquatic Center.
Can I hear your comments? Is it my phone?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Um, everyone here really agrees, I think, that we need something, Aquatic Center would be good. Can we afford it? Um, I have a problem with a joint venture with the city. Like Mr. Surti said, they've got a lot of infrastructure work that they're gonna have to pay for. They've had a swimming pool. Now, I know there's a new administration, and I've only heard, heard good things about the new administration. But the past administration, we have a swimming pool. Kids use swimming pools during the summer, keeps them out of trouble. Five years ago, when I came here, it was fifty thousand dollars to fix the swimming pool. But no, we couldn't come up with fifty thousand dollars to fix the swimming pool. Well, earlier, earlier this year, um, from Mr. Panther, we heard that, um, well, it was gonna cost over a hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. Well, now it's a million dollars to fix that pool. You can build a new pool like that size for a million dollars. I just think it is not, it is not a good sense to depend on the city for money. Because I think this new regime that is there, and I speak highly of them, they're gonna be strapped for money. They're gonna really be strapped for money. What I find interesting is, we couldn't come up with money to fix, the city couldn't come up with money to fix the swimming pool, but they could spend sixty-seven thousand dollars for a mat for the playground, which mulch could have been used. Libby, my partner, who was just, who'd just been here, worked the playgrounds for a lot of years and offered her help on what you should do, what is good for it. No one ever contacted her, so. But I leave it at that, I, I'm sorry, I, I mean, like I said, I really have reservations whenever you have to deal with two different entities. Especially with the previous administration, with the city council, Libby was an abomination. Thank you very much, you guys, have been a breath to share with you since you've come a year ago.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Miss Cantor? Miss Cantor, did you have some? I apologize, I didn't know if you had handled it, maybe you were not. Anyone else?
Anyone want to say something? Chris, anybody?
Um, well, I hope that the city and the county can work together very well in the water of Dory. Looking forward to that, so anything that, not necessarily quite, but, 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 uh, anything that we can, that we need to work together on, I hope we, your relationship, I believe we got.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, I appreciate y'all, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close public commentary. Um, gentlemen, we need, um, bring us down to executive session, I feel we need it. So, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session, all in favor? First, second vote?
Second.
All in favor? Out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
While in the executive session, we talked about real estate, no action taken. That being said, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?